I hereby call the City of Buellton City Council Meeting for April fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-two to order. If I could get Alicia Lewis to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Ready? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Linda, roll call.
Councilmember Andresic.
Present.
Councilmember Lewis.
Here.
Councilmember Sanchez.
Here.
Vice Mayor King.
Here.
And Mayor Sarah.
Here. Thank you very much. Do we have any reordering of the agenda tonight?
Not this evening, Madam.
All right. Moving on to public comments, this is the public's opportunity, whether in person or on Zoom, to speak for up to three minutes on any subject they'd like to speak on. I don't see any speaker slips here. Linda, do we have anybody?
Um, no, and unfortunately, we lost power today, so we don't have email, but we're public, no public comments.
All righty. Thank you very much. Moving on to the consent calendar, closing public comment, moving on to the consent calendar. We have quite a few tonight. We have the minutes of March twenty-four, two thousand and twenty-two City Council Meeting. List of claims to be approved and ratified for payment to date for fiscal year two thousand and twenty-one, two thousand and twenty-two. Resolution number twenty-two dash zero-nine, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Buellton, California, approving a three percent cost of living adjustment, or COLA, for all regular full-time employees effective July first, two thousand and twenty-two. Resolution number twenty-two dash ten, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Buellton, California, fixing the employee's contribution under the Public Employees Medical and Hospital Care Act. At an equal amount for employees and annuitants and revoking resolution number oh-six dash twenty-eight. Resolution number twenty-two dash eleven, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Buellton, California, proclaiming the continued need to meet by teleconference. And resolution number twenty-two dash twelve, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Buellton, California, adopting a pension funding policy. Council, any questions of staff?
Move for approval.
All righty. Linda, we've had our motion in a second.
Okay, Vice Mayor King.
Hi.
Councilmember Lewis.
Hi.
Councilmember Andresic.
Hi.
Councilmember Sanchez.
Hi.
And Mayor Sarah.
Hi. Thank you very much. Okay, now I get on to the good part of this meeting, which I really, really enjoy. We have two proclamations tonight. The first one is a proclamation recognizing National Donate Life Month. We've been doing this for how many years, Linda?
Quite a few years.
Quite a few years. It's seventy-five years known. Okay, let me, I'm getting to it here, so I can read it off here. We also have the plaque. We have W. Scott Burns, who is usually here to, he is here. Oh, it's so good to see you. Okay, I move into it as quick as I can. I just jumped past a whole bunch of, bunch of stuff. I've got it right here. I'm gonna read the proclamation, then I'll, I'll hand it to you. We'll get photographs. And this is your opportunity to give us your story, because it's very, very inspiring. Whereas organ, eye, tissue, marrow, and blood donation are life-giving acts recognized worldwide as expressions of compassion to those in need. And more than one hundred and six thousand individuals nationwide and more than twenty thousand in California are currently on the national organ transplant waiting list. And on average, seventeen people die each day while waiting. And whereas the need for donated organs is especially urgent in Hispanic, Latino, and African-American communities. Also, a single individual's donation of the heart, lungs, liver, kidneys, pancreas, and small intestine can save up to eight lives, and donation of tissue can save and heal the lives of more than seventy-five others. And whereas organ donors saved more than forty thousand lives last year, the most ever. And any person can register to be an organ, eye, and tissue donor, regardless of age or medical conditions. And being a registered donor does not impact the quality of life-saving medical care a person receives in an emergency. And whereas California residents can sign up with Donate Life California Donor Registry online at any time by visiting www.donatelifeCalifornia.org. Or for Spanish speakers, www.donavidaCalifornia.org. And whereas, sorry, hang on. California residents can sign up to be an organ, eye, and tissue donor when applying for or renewing their driver's licenses or ID cards at the California Department Motor of Vehicles. And California residents interested in saving a life through living kidney donation may visit www.livingdonationcalifornia.org. Now therefore, be it resolved that in recognition of National Donate Life Month, the month of April, two thousand and twenty-two, is hereby proclaimed DMV Donate Life Month in the City of Buellton. And in doing so, we encourage all Californians to check yes online or when applying for or renewing their driver's license or ID card at the DMV, presented this day, the fourteenth of April, two thousand and twenty-two.
Sir. Let me give you. Mr. Burns. Again. So we. That smile. First we welcome. Great. We truly appreciate the opportunity, once a year, to recognize this. So the mic is yours, if you wanna, there might be a council member too, who hasn't heard your story.
Let me first say, Gabi Oda had a, something that took a half hour to get passed. Uh, where Honda Ranch, I'm sure, and I apologize for that. My name is Scott Burns. Why I'm here is a real simple thing. Basically, you are three times as likely to be a patient needing an organ transplant than you are to be someone donating an organ nationwide. That's why we have this seven-year, eight-year rule. If someone dies and wants to donate their organ, realistically, it's one out of two hundred people are dying away that their organs can be transplanted. So we're talking one per hundred thousand. So it's really, it's, it's, these are issues. And when there's three times as people, many people needing them, that can give them, you can see what the issue is. Why we come here and promote it, and we thank you for doing this, is the last study that was done said ninety percent of the people, ninety or ninety-five percent of the people are in favor of organ donation and are in favor of donating an organ. Same study came out that fifty-five percent of the people actually had signed up. So you're kind of going, what can we do? What should we keep promoting? I've mentioned my, I'm Scott Burns, two thousand and twelve, my kidney started to fail. Turned out that I, I have, I'm allergic to leave. One in two hundred and fifty thousand people are that, and that caused my kidney failure. Two thousand and fifteen, I'm sitting on a friend's sailboat at Santa Cruz Island, and it's Memorial Day, and I get this call. "Mr. Burns, we have a kidney for you." This is from the Santa Barbara Harbor Patrol. They got me, took me back quickly. I ended up at Cedars-Sinai Hospital that evening. The next morning, I was awake with a kidney that was fully functioning, or you could say that I was urinating correctly. Nice way for, now it's half of the story. The other half is Vivian Butel, the nurse who died, and whose kidney I have. She was a nurse at Cottage Hospital. She collapsed in the gym. They thought it was a stroke. It turned out to be a brain injury. So basically, brain dead. So her family said, well, let's donate the organ. Her sister-in-law and my wife kind of made a connection, well, maybe I needed something. So since then, I've actually never met Vivian, but I know her mom, her sisters, her, the various nieces and nephews who were in high school and are now graduated from college, because I've had her kidney for about almost seven years. So that's my story, and I just, the other thing, if any of you guys have questions. Linda has my phone number, or if you know people later that do, ask them to call me. There's a lot of information that took me about three months to learn, when I found out I needed it. I can generally give that out in about a twenty-minute phone call, just to get people started in the right direction. Because really, when it hits, nobody expects it, and you're not sure what to do, what to happen. And suddenly, you don't realize there's a whole group of people out there that are willing to help. Any questions, comments?
We just truly appreciate you coming up.
I get to do it in live person. But there is still traffic.
To read a proclamation is one thing. To hear a story is, it just changes. It, it brings it to reality. So.
I'm gonna sit back here for a little bit, and I'll just sneak off.
There you go. Thank you very much, sir. Thank you. This is the nice part of the job. I have, and I have two of them. Another proclamation recognizing National Child Abuse Awareness and Prevention Month. Whereas child abuse and neglect are a community condition, and problem and finding solution depends on involvement among people in the community. And whereas the effects of child abuse and neglect are felt by communities and need to be addressed by the entire community. And whereas, San, Santa Ynez Valley, People Helping People, and its Child Abuse Prevention Council, or K-PAC, K-PAC, partners have been committed to educating this community on child abuse and neglect, and are sponsoring several events throughout the month to heighten public awareness of abuse in the county of Santa Barbara. These events will provide information and materials that support families to prevent child maltreatment and celebrate people who work with and support children and families. And whereas, effective child abuse prevention programs succeed because of partnerships created among social service agencies, school youth organizations, religious organizations, civic organizations, law enforcement agencies, the business community and residents. And whereas, all residents should become more aware of the importance of prevention in the community and become involved in supporting parents to raise their children in a safe nurturing environment. Now therefore, I, Mayor Holly Sierra, and the Buellton City Council do hereby recognize April twenty-two as National Child Abuse Awareness and Prevention Month in the City of Buellton. And I call this observance to the attention of all of our citizens in an effort to prevent child abuse, presented this day, fourteenth day of April, two thousand and twenty-two. And John Crowell, Crowell is here from People Helping People, the program's director, to accept the proclamation.
Congratulations, sir. Thank you.
No, you're good.
All righty, this is for you, sir. And if you've got the platform, if you want to speak anymore, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Juan. Thank everyone for having me. Just a few words. Appreciate the proclamation, but definitely doesn't stop there. We have pinwheels and solving at the Better and Tall. I'm sure you've seen it. Just to bring awareness, so one pinwheel represents five cases that were investigated in our area. So between Wompoke and our San Ynez Valley, there was one thousand two hundred and sixty-three cases referred. Eight hundred and thirty-five of those cases were investigated. So obviously, we're working towards prevention and getting those numbers down, and it definitely takes a village. So a few words in regards to CAPC is how it's called.
Thank you.
No problem.
Thank you.
Child Abuse Prevention Council. So People Helping People is one of the members there. And we're preventing child abuse and neglect. It's an important and all-year-long job. The Santa Barbara County Child Abuse Prevention Council is a collaborative group committed individuals who come together each month to coordinate prevention and early intervention efforts on behalf of children, youth, and families and community. And we're happy to announce that we're doing a strengthening families program, no cost. It's eleven weeks long, and it's in Spanish on Thursday evening, so if anybody's interested. But each of us has a role to play in ensuring the safety of our children. We all have various capacities to engage, whether we are a concerned neighbor, a family member, a parent, or an elected official, or work with community-based organizations. So if you see something, say something, and please share the work that People Helping People does. And we're happy to help out the community. Thank you for all your efforts as well.
Thank you very much, sir.
I have a question. You have a fundraiser this weekend, don't you?
Yes, we do. If you'd like to join us for Vino de Espainos, appreciate that. It's two o'clock, Roblar Farm, the Saturday. Polo, if you wanna enjoy polo, that'll be July ninth. So thank you so much.
John's writing dates down.
Thank you.
Thank you. All righty, two proclamations. The enjoyment. I get to move on to another recognition. I'm just, I'm gonna say it, and then I'm gonna let our city manager, if you have any words. And our Lieutenant Jeff Green, thank you very much. Our police chief in Buellton is leading. He's moving on to another exciting part of the Sheriff's Department. And I just feel really fortunate that we've had you for two years. And I, I, you know, you're leaving big shoes to fill, because every time we get a new police chief, the attention that the city gets just increases. And, and you've let us know of any accidents, any fires, any problems. The council has been really well informed, and we truly, truly appreciate that. And you will be missed. Did you have anything you wanted to?
Madam Mayor, I'd just like to echo that. Lieutenant Green has been an outstanding resource for, for the city staff, bringing to bear the resources the department has for the city and the needs the city has. On top of that, just as our liaison to the, to the Sheriff's Department, Lieutenant Green has been extremely communicative. He's, he's very responsive when we need something. And I, I just can't say enough about how great it's been to work with him over the past two and a half years, or two years or so. So we're very happy to see that he got a, an assignment that he seems to like, but we are sorry to see him go.
What's not to lie?
If I could get you to come up and get a picture with council, and I'll give you the plaque, and then you can, then you, the mic is yours after that. But if I can get council to come and take a picture. I like the pictures, but you've supported.
I like the pictures, but you've supported all of us.
Where would you like me?
Right here, sir, under our beautiful medallion. This is your plaque, and we truly do.
It's coming.
We truly appreciate your service.
One more. Jesus. Alrighty.
Thank you very much, sir. Really appreciate it. The mic is yours if you, if you wanna.
Appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you very much. This is yours too, your sleeve. The sleeve part. You stick it in a drawer, you don't wanna get scratched. Just. It should.
On the wall.
Right on the wall.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that. That was very, very nice of you guys. I mentioned in solving on Monday that I, I kinda felt like I was the COVID lieutenant. I didn't get to quite do some of the fun things, you know, the events and stuff because we didn't have them. But what I did take on was the challenge of, because it was COVID, I wanted to make sure that we were doing everything we could to do to keep the place safe and keep everything running as much as possible, to include, you know, the businesses needing their footprints extended and all that. So what I would like to say is that it's been a pleasure working with Buellton City, Scott, Linda, Rose, I mean, your, your staff's amazing. I said that before, but they really are. There's not been a time where I haven't been able to call somebody and go, I'm not really sure where to go with this, but I need this. And as much as I've been responsive to you guys, you guys have been responsive to me, and that includes all you on the city council. So I appreciate that. I really do. And although I am gonna go on and have some fun with some things, I will miss you guys, so, and I'm just down the street if there's anything you need. And again, when I leave, someone else is gonna take the place. It's like I filled in for Eddie, and those were really big feet, and fill in for him. I'd like to introduce Lieutenant Garrett Tesla, and he is now the new police chief for Buellton, and let, let him say a few words.
Thank you very much.
Mayor Sierra, I will, I will echo what you said and what Scott said, I do have big shoes to fill. Jeff's been a mentor to me my entire career, so I'm honored that I get to be the one to take his place up here. I won't exhaust your patience with my entire resume tonight, I'll share that with you as the time goes on. But I came out of here as a sergeant in the central stations before I was transferred to detectives, and I absolutely love working up here. I was excited to get this position, I was hoping for it, and when I got the call that I got to go to Central, it really made my first position as a lieutenant exactly what I wanted. So I'm excited to be here. Your staff has been incredibly welcoming to me. Scott, I have met several times, Linda, same names that he's mentioned already, and it's just been a wonderful welcome in the two weeks that I've been here. So we will continue to talk and have our discussions, of course, we will as well, Scott, but for now, just thank you. I'm honored to be here, and I look forward to filling those shoes that Jeff's taken behind.
Well, welcome, and we, we look forward to getting to know you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. And Jeff, Lieutenant Green, thank you for everything you've done for our city. Really appreciate it. Okay.
I'd like to also say a word of thanks, because
Please.
Jeff's been, been like one of the family here, blended in, and appreciate all the attention he gave us without, without asking any questions, and then, and offering his help always, and thank you very much.
And can we call you like at three, three o'clock in the morning and say, why is that helicopter flying over my house for an hour now?
He's gonna do it to your house.
He's just gonna buzz you. Only you, only you.
Yeah. Right? Three AM.
I, I really hope to hear that. Thank you. I, I am trying to, trying to figure out what we can do, and I truly appreciate that. I do. Thank you, sir. Alrighty, public hearings?
We have no public hearings tonight.
City member comments slash items, we'll start at this end. Councilman Andrusik, do you have any comments or items to talk about?
Happy to be here, and glad you're here, and glad we're sending off a good man.
Up, up, up yonder.
To his next adventure.
Councilmember Lewis, any comments or items?
No.
Alrighty, Councilman Sanchez?
I just wanted to mention a thank you to Kathy with the chamber. We had this Lagerville event, and there was over a thousand participants, and they all got little glasses that discovered Buellton on it. And so Buellton got a lot of, had a lot of people in, and it was a successful event. So I wanna thank her and her staff and El Fuego for all their hard work and organization. It was a good, it was a good presentation.
Good. Thank you. Vice Mayor King, comments, items?
Unfortunately, I was out of town for that, so I could not attend. But I would like to say that on May second to the fourth, we're, some of us, hopefully more of us, will be going to JPIA in Palm Desert, and JPIA has always got some great, great information for council members.
Alrighty, thank you. I just wanted to thank council and staff for the very nice flowers we got today at the House. Appreciate it. Moving on to written communications, do we have any written communications?
None this evening.
Committee reports, any, I know Councilman Sanchez has committee reports.
I do.
Okay, we'll start there.
We had Arts and Culture Committee meeting, and we have a couple of things coming, and they'll be here, I think, at the end of the month. And I went to a CCWA meeting the other day, and everything is good. I got an orientation from Ray Stokes, let me know what's going on, and then filled me in.
All the things that Ed couldn't tell you then.
Yeah, well, I just, it was interesting because he has a good next presentation, and we're in good hands with, with that outfit. They're doing a good job.
Alrighty, thank you. Any other? Boy, it's been a quiet couple of weeks, huh? Alrighty, then we are moving on from committee reports on to our business items. The first business item is ordinance number twenty-two dash zero-five, an ordinance of the city council of the city of Buellton, California approving a development agreement twenty-one dash DA dash zero-one for the five eighteen Avenue of Flags mixed-use development project located at five eighteen Avenue of Flags, and authorizing execution of the agreement by the city manager. This is the second reading. Mr. Wolf?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the city council. As you'll recall, on March twenty-fourth, the city council, following a public hearing, approved the entitlements for the five eighteen project as the mayor described just a moment ago, the mixed-use project located at five eighteen Avenue of Flags. The entitlements were approved, and at the same time, or just after that, the city council introduced for first reading an ordinance approving the development agreement for this particular project. This is the second reading of that ordinance in order for that to become effective. So at this point, I'm happy to answer any questions that the council may have, but this is essentially just the second reading to finalize the adoption of that ordinance.
Thank you. Any questions? No questions? I'm going to open it up to the public. Is there any public comment on this item?
Do have. Let's see.
I know Brandon Mann is on.
Emails back up.
Emails back up?
Yeah, I have no public comments.
Alrighty. Brandon, did you wanna add anything, or you wanna just be available for questions?
I'm just available for questions, I appreciate it.
Alrighty, thank you. Okay, questions, comments, motions?
No motions, go ahead.
Alrighty.
Okay, Councilmember Lewis.
Hi.
Councilmember Andrusik.
Hi.
And Councilmember Sanchez.
Hi.
Vice Mayor King.
No.
And Mayor Sierra.
I. Okay, so that's a four to one. Moving on is business item, agenda item number eleven, request to authorize funding for temporary planning department staffing. That would be Mr. Wolf again.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the city council. We have experienced in recent weeks a number of absences from the planning department staff, extended absences, one of which was anticipated and planned for, another of which was not. Unfortunately, all that renders all of our full-time professional planners out of the office for a couple of months. So in an effort to, to keep up with the workload in the planning department and to meet our statutory deadlines that a lot of these planning projects have, it's going to be necessary to bring in some additional part-time temporary staffing for that. We're, we're not sure exactly how much that's gonna cost, it depends on the source and such, we're not sure exactly for how long we're going to need that, and it's my hope that we can work that into our existing budget, but in the event that we can't, I'm, I'm requesting that the city council authorize an expenditure of up to fifteen thousand dollars to provide this temporary staffing for the duration of the time that it's needed. Able to, to make do with that amount until leave. In, in the event that we cannot, we will return to the city council with an explanation for that and a request for additional funding if that's necessary. I'm happy to answer any questions you have.
Thank you very much. First of all, any questions for Mr. Scott? Alrighty.
Any shifts?
I'm sorry?
Are you pulling any shifts?
I will actually be, be providing additional help to the planning department, yes.
You still have your, your certificate.
I do.
How, how lucky are we? A city manager that has a planning background.
That's unfortunate, right?
That's just what you wanted. Thought you got away from it?
No, I didn't think I got away from it, but it's, it's nice having a staff. It's, let's put it that way.
More than one and a half. Yeah. Okay, then I'm gonna open it up to the public. Do we have any public comment on this?
No comments.
Closing public comment, bringing it back to council for consideration of authorization of amount not to exceed fifteen thousand if needed.
I move that we authorize a general fund expenditure not to exceed to provide temporary planning department staff and thousand dollars.
Second.
Alrighty, easy enough. Linda?
Okay, Vice Mayor King.
Hi.
Councilmember Sanchez.
Hi.
Councilmember Andrusik.
Hi.
Councilmember Lewis.
Hi.
And Mayor's here.
I, thank you. Moving on to city manager's report.
Right, as the mayor mentioned, it has been a relatively slow couple of weeks, but we will, I, I will have one item for the manager's report this evening. I have been asked by the Buellton Senior Center to make an announcement and an invitation to the city council to attend the, the opening, or the celebration of the opening of the senior center's community kitchen, and it is one of only two community kitchens in the San Ynez Valley, I believe. The open kitchen event will take place on Tuesday, April twenty-sixth, from five thirty to seven PM at the senior center. If you have any questions, please feel free to let me know. I don't know much about it at this point, but I'll be happy to find that information out and get that to you.
That's it.
So that's all I have for this evening. Thank you.
Alrighty, well, I, with that, it's now six thirty-five. I adjourn this meeting until our next meeting, Thursday, April twenty-eighth, two thousand and twenty-two, at six PM. Thank you.